Have the Select Board for June 21st, 2021. At six o'clock, please rise as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing as we honor our men and women in the service, both past and present, and also our first responders and healthcare workers. Please be seated. First item on the agenda is a one-day license for the Cultural Center. Who's here for that? Anybody here for the Cultural Center?
Yes, not. They were invited. Not sure why they're not here.
Okay, so it looks like it's a it's an art exhibit opening. Visitors will view the artist's work and meet the artists. Hours are five to seven. One-day event on July 16th. Okay, maximum number of people, thirty. No admission. We'll be serving wine, I guess, that's what it says.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And it's been approved by all the necessary peoples via online permitting.
Yes.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren. On the motion, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Approved. Next, we have a one-day event for the Farm and Coast Market for Wednesday, June 30th, between the hours of four and seven, four to five for staff, five to seven for customers. Number of expected people, three hundred and fifty during the course of the three hours. And Ms. Kotay is here for that.
Yes, I am.
Okay. So what's the event and reason, the purpose?
Originally, it was going to be just a thank you to all our regular customers for supporting us through the pandemic. But we got so close into July that it's also our five-year anniversary of being open. So we're gonna just make it one party rather than two. And that's the reason for the event, is to thank our customers for supporting us.
Okay. And it looks like we have all the necessary approvals. Board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Harren. On the motion, any questions? Roll call vote. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Good luck. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing? When we filled it out, we didn't realize that the concert series was already starting on Wednesdays. So would it be a big deal, Christine said to just mention it, if we change it to Tuesday instead of Wednesday so there wouldn't be so much congestion down there?
Wouldn't we have to redo the paperwork?
We would have to have it reviewed again. I know it's generally, it's a change of the date. So I'm not sure was part of the review process if the departments that review it. I don't think they would have any issues, but I don't want to speak for them without having them take a look at it.
I did mention it to the police officer that I had to talk to about what their arrangements would be. And he sort of agreed that, you know, it would be a little bit better for the, you know, pay Naram if we didn't have it both on the same night. So, because we were gonna have a little bit of music outside too, and it just seemed to be kind of, you know, redundant to have the community going over there and then coming back here and so on and so forth. So however you want me to do it, I can resubmit tomorrow morning and Christine's on vacation this week though, right?
Yeah, the board doesn't meet until the 12th.
So I think I might offer if the board would like to vote for the Tuesday date based on approval by all the departments as part of the regular approval process. So if you've approved it in you know, in the determination that all the other departments have approved it as well. So contingent on the other departments approving.
And what's the date?
I'll make that motion.
What's the new date, please?
June 29th.
29th.
Yep, Tuesday.
All right, so the motion is to approve the change of date of the event from June 30th to June 29th at the same time, subject to review by the necessary departments and their approval. Is that correct, Mr. Harren?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Harren, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Mr. Tattelbaum.
One question. Should we, do we need to make sure that I find a way for the departments to approve? What's the timeline so it's enough time to change the date and get the thing voted so that
There's plenty of time. They do it via the online permitting system. So they should be able to turn it over within a couple of days.
So refill it out on the 29th and submit it the way I did the original time?
We'll modify the existing application and then send it back out. So you don't have to do anything.
Okay.
You'll be notified when we make the change.
Okay. Via that viewpoint online?
Correct.
Correct, okay, sure.
Okay. All right, so on the motion for the change of date. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Okay, good luck.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening, guys.
You too now. Okay, next we have the recognition of Cindy Marlin's retirement.
What about the Thirsty Whale?
Nope, that's been delayed because it's, the event is being held in the parking lot. And that needs additional that needs additional approval and needs a safety plan by the safety officer.
Okay. Hey, that takes care of the question I had for them, which was why they do it in the back of the club.
It's okay, got it. My mistake in not letting you know. I just found out.
And we just went back and forth today, so my apologies.
That's all right. Okay. Cindy Marlin.
Hello.
I guess she's really retired. She doesn't want to appear.
She doesn't know how to do it.
Yes, she doesn't know how to work the equipment.
Maybe she's on the same network Stanley's on.
My god.
Yes, logged in. We see her there. I'm not sure.
Can we send a jolt to a keyboard?
DCTV, ask her to unmute.
I just did.
Okay. I know you guys are on top of it. All right, well.
Maybe she didn't think we'd be so prompt.
Yeah, really.
Well, while we wait.
While we wait, wait a minute.
I know. Boy, you guys are fast today.
Government, local government turns out quickly.
We can't wait to
So we have notification of Dr. Marlin's retirement as in charge of DCTV effective the end of this month. So we're here to lay upon her head accolades and greetings and salutations. So as long as I can tell you this, as long as I've been in government dealing with DCTV, nothing but first-class organization. And the growth of DCTV has just been absolutely remarkable. Under the leadership and guidance of Dr. Marlin, along with the staff that is still there today and those that have left, they've done a great job. So I, this is another bellwether moment in the town where we lose where we lose a long-serving employee, friend of the town, and looking forward to a new chapter in her life and whoever is, takes her place. So Cindy, the only thing I can say is thank you for your service over the number of years in a lot of the capacities that you have served, chairing, co-chairing the 350 celebration, sitting in on Council on Agent, sitting in on the Voke. So there's still, you know, there's still opportunities there which we will tap into every so often. You're not gonna go far, that's for sure. We do have all your phone numbers and email addresses, so we know where you live.
Right, you do.
We will be able to to tap into your knowledge and your syntaxes for your, for help. So I guess the easiest thing to say is thank you for your service. It is greatly appreciated by me. And I know it's greatly appreciated by members of the board and other people who served in this town, especially during this last year. With just the remote meetings and the challenges that are brought, with especially the remote town meeting. Both town meetings ran, the three town meetings ran absolutely superb. It was it was definitely something that a lot of the communities looked up to and wanted to say so. I just, the only thing I can really say at this point is thank you. Thank you for your service. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Nothing could be better to say that Cindy is leaving while at the top of her game. Because I'm mentioning the kind of year and a half we've had and what we've been able to produce and the communication amongst our town staff committees and town meetings, it's been unreal. One could almost say it's almost been better in many ways because I think more people are participating and listening to meetings, et cetera, because they are run well, they're seamless. And that's a tribute to Cindy. She has a great staff, but someone has to organize it all together. And it's been a credible honor and privilege to work with you, Cindy, and thank you.
We're gonna let Stanley go last.
Okay.
You know Stanley's gonna get mushy.
I'm gonna, yeah.
John?
Cindy, I wish you the best. I want to thank you for all the assistance you've given me over the years.
And you made him look good, too.
That's true.
How's you do that?
Magic, magic.
I can't, I can't help you with your Zoom, obviously, John. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I'd like to echo everything that's been said. And I just know that DCTV is a first-class operation and it's appreciated by everyone in town. How could they not? I mean, it's terrific. They take care of all the meetings and everything else that's needed, so.
Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Mickelson?
Dr. Marlin. Dear, dear friend, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done, for everything you've done for me personally also, helping me along the way, my programs with DCTV. But you've had your fingers in everything in town, in a good way. You always, you're at every meeting that has to be, that you needed to attend with a big smile always, as usual. Your attentiveness to detail is magnificent. It's I'm gonna really miss you. I know you're gonna pop up somewhere. So there's no question, I just want you to call me first so I can make sure I'm there. But truly love you, Dr. Marlin. You're just a decent human being and hardworking and a lovely, lovely woman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know the town has a long history of not giving gold watches upon retirement, so we'll just continue that long tradition.
Don't treat me any differently, thank you.
It's not in the budget, that's for sure. But yeah, no, it's, again, Cindy, thank you very much for your service. You know, it is, you, the number of people that look to DCTV for a lot of things. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just, besides the meetings, these, you know, to be honest with you, the governmental meetings, you know, notwithstanding, but there's a great number of people that look at the high school sports and what goes on in the schools and that. And that adds to so many levels, and it's not just one particular school. It's not the high school, it's not the middle, it's all the schools. And, you know, and especially, you know, when it comes time to, you do the concerts and people, I don't know how many, I don't know how many CDs of programs have been sold over the years, but I'm sure there was quite a lot because people have a tendency to, they want to keep that. It beats, they can focus on what's in front of them and not worry about taking pictures and using the video to capture it, and they can just order it and they have it. And that's probably one of the best things a parent can have. That way they're not missing anything and, you know, the camera isn't fudged and it's not moving around and whatnot, everything is there. You know, so that's just in itself is, was, is a good thing. So we wish you the best on your retirement. And I know you're not gonna be a stranger, that's for sure. We will, like I said, we know where you live and we will have your contact, we do have your contact information, so it'll be there, so.
Thank you.
And now you have the floor if you'd like.
Oh my goodness, okay. I never thought I would get it, but it's okay. Thank you. So what I have to say, it only takes like maybe forty or fifty minutes, so just kind of sit back in your chair if you could.
Now Stanley's learned well, that's for sure.
But there's quite a few people I'd like to thank and I hope I don't leave out anyone, which I'm sure I will, but my board of directors, Jim Thompson, Joe Barbero, who's probably my biggest supporter in so many ways, Paula Vassar, Tracy Olivera, Russ Robinson, and Cynthia Rose. I also wanted, I've worked for a lot of different folks, including Mike Gagné, Edi Caponi, and Dave Pressman, I especially wanted to thank. Also working with the Friends of the Elderly and Maria Connor and this Select Board and previous Select Boards who have always been so supportive of DCTV. We really do appreciate. It's been a scream working with Kyle Costa, as we all know. He can be an interesting personality. The Dartmouth Wanderers, again, Joe Barbero, Paula Vassar, Edith Andrews, Pam Cole, and Robert Harding. I would be remiss in not thanking my staff. You know, Peter Chase, who makes all the magic happen with all of his technical background. Mike Manis, other people on the team, Mike Fernandez and Dan Maderas. Unfortunately, we don't have Derek Freitz here to make jokes or anything, but we all know that Derek was definitely a big part of this organization. Also, I'd like to thank my home team, Dr. Ellie Marlin, Kathleen Pratt, and Scott Chardy. I've really enjoyed working for the town. I really appreciate all the opportunities that the town has given me. Service is where my heart is. And I do plan to keep in communication with the town and I really appreciate everything you've done for me.
Well, thank you. We definitely appreciate the work that you put in over the years to bring what basically was a fledgling public access channel to something highly significant and well-recognized and awarded, that's for sure.
It wasn't even public access, Sean.
I know.
It was, somebody threw me a book, a contract, and said, "Make this happen."
Yep, I remember all that, that's for sure.
Luckily, luckily, I'm a brave person.
Yep, and that's for sure. So, thank you and good luck, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we're gonna segue into the next part, which was the interim director of the media. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so, you know, Cindy Marlin has been with the town for twenty-seven years. She said in her resignation letter. For a big part of that time, I think Peter Chase has been here twenty-six years as the technical manager. So he's been basically Cindy's right-hand man for decades. He knows the system well. You all know Peter very well. I think you've seen his work up close, but particularly this past year when we were dealing with COVID to help get our town meeting accomplished, all of our remote town meetings accomplished. He did an excellent job. He's very acutely aware of the operations at DCTV. So I think it was, it's a good move to appoint Peter as the interim direct media director for a term until we can take a look at the operations in light of COVID. Many things have changed. There's a lot more things being done remotely, trying to figure out how to deal with that properly and position the staff properly to provide the best service moving forward in light of these changes. And so I would recommend that we appoint Peter Chase as the interim director of media.
I think, I think when we have a long time, a long-serving department head leaving, I think it's a good time to kind of look inside and reflect as to how that department's been running and what we can do to improve the services. Whether it needs improving or not, it still needs to be looked at how the delivery, delivery of product, the delivery of customer service, and the delivery of care is important. So I like the idea of looking at how we can take a look at DCTV, its operations, how it can be improved or does it need to be improved? And if not, let's just continue. And I like the idea of getting Peter involved as the interim at this point in time. I mean, you know, you have, you know, you have somebody leaving with twenty-seven years of experience and yet you still have somebody on board with twenty-six years' experience. So I mean, it's just, to me, that's a no-brainer. So I like the idea, I'm going to endorse the idea of putting Peter Chase as the interim director. I can't make that motion, no. I would like to, but I'm not going to. Mr. Mickelson?
I'll do it for you. I would gladly appoint, try to appoint as the interim director of media, Peter Chase. And it's always wonderful to promote within. Maybe Peter can answer some of the questions you just asked, Sean. He might have some ideas.
I know he does.
Well, I understand that also. But I mean, I think we can meet with him and his staff and in a regular basis and come up with some ideas that he might have. And we can wrap our rounds around it, maybe not, but and not to say that Cindy might not have had some ideas moving forward either, especially with this past year and what we've gone through with social media and DCTV and working at home. So I'm glad to put his name forward to appoint him as interim director of media.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yep. I think it certainly is an opportunity for Peter, but Peter has been second in charge for a long time. And now is time to, we're giving him the bill to step forward and go wherever it's gonna take. I think on top of that, however, the industry is changing dramatically, licensing and how the cable network's gonna work and where the revenue's coming from is dramatic. I think it's a great time to assess all those things as well as test the waters for what we need for direction. Peter, the sky's the limit. He's gonna have to step up and show that if that's what his choice is, he can be the man in charge as opposed to being a second in command. But I think it's a great opportunity for, not only for Peter, but also for us as a town to assess the entire operation of what cable TV means, cable means period. In our town, it's a great chance to do that assessment and make, take our time to do it, do it right.
Great, great. Okay, on the motion, any further questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, so we have appointed Peter Chase as the interim director of media. And, Mr. McGinnis, you will I know he's probably listening.
Yes, but I will let him. We've been meeting regularly, so we'll meet and ask it in more detail.
Perfect. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, we have the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee. We have to reestablish this because now is the time that this will be expiring and we need to renew it. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so Mr. Haddad has drafted a memo that's in your packet, and I'll let him give you more detail.
Good evening. So ultimately, this is a plan that needs to be recertified every seven years through the State Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It makes the town eligible for various grant opportunities, including the land grant that was just received for the Russell's Mills Land Conservation Project. So it's a great tool, not only for the town to kind of come up with a long-term plan, but also it allows us to go after those grant opportunities. The memo that I've included ultimately follows the same composition as the last committee. When this was done in 2014, 2015, we received a grant from the State Community Compact Cabinet to hire Serp Ed, who will be our consultant throughout this process. It seems like the committee was pretty successful last time, so I don't see any need to change the membership. And so, yeah, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, but I think it should be successful.
One thing, if I might add, Kody did discuss it briefly, but you know, since in the last few years, we've started the UMass Dartmouth, Town of Dartmouth Towngown Group. I would recommend that the board maybe include a representative from UMass Dartmouth to be on that committee?
I agree. I agree. So that would bring the membership up to twenty-two.
Yeah, and that falls right in line with what Serp Ed had recommended. They had recommended somewhere in the range of fifteen to thirty. So I think that would be great.
All right. All right, board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Harren?
The Select Board has to represent someone. I would be honored to be on that committee.
I don't think anybody's gonna argue with that, Mr. Harren.
Okay.
So, all right, so I need a motion to approve this committee and to appoint Mr. Harren as the representative for the Select Board with the inclusion of a representative from UMass Dartmouth.
So both.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Harren. On the motion, any questions? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, got it, got it.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have a letter from Tim Lancaster, the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation regarding lifeguard staffing. It seems to be that this kind of fits in with what's going on and out there in the workforce anyway, that staffing levels are not as where they should be. Mr. Lancaster, can you further expound upon this, please?
Sure. I mean, obviously, COVID, right off the top, had some impact here. During COVID, there were no lifeguard classes being put on, so the pool of applicants that normally would be available for certified lifeguards is obviously much lower. So that's impacting the pool that we have to draw off of, pretty simple. Secondly, there, as Mr. McDonald just mentioned, there are tons and tons of jobs available right now for teenagers. So teenagers can pretty much drive down any street right now for teenagers, so um teenagers can pretty much drive down any street in this town and see a help wanted sign at some type of establishment, most of which do not require any effort on their part to be certified in any particular task. Um, to become a life-certified lifeguard, to work here, you cry as about a three-hundred-dollar class that you would have to take. Um, all those of us who have teenagers, me being one of them, quite frankly, which I never thought might would come, but I do have to now, um know that, especially when they start driving, that uh you know, they look at how they can get as much money as possible for gas for their cars and every penny matters, so um in the past, we've been pretty competitive here in Dartmouth, um I've, you know, it seems like we're always trying to get that seasonal scale where it needs to be to be competitive with the other communities. Right now, the state has kind of dumped us on that a little bit, they're up a few dollars and fifty cents an hour or more, and that's certainly plenty to attract our teenagers to go work over at Emress Lloyd or Horse Neck, so and if you follow social media, media, or you know, even the Standard Times, you'll notice that the state has put out the calling card, trying to grab as many guards as possible. Um, because there's that shortage, because there hasn't been many classes, so you kind of got like, you know, I, I did a, I talked to the Dartmouth Weekend, the Standard Times, you kind of get that perfect storm going on right now where lots of jobs available, no need to pay to have certification. Everyone's looking for them and the place that pays the most is gonna get them first, that's just kind of how it goes, so that's kind of where we are. Um, I've never in the twenty-one years I've been doing this had this few lifeguards, um staff in the beaches. If you watch the news at all over the last weekend, you'll see, i- it's not just here, it's not just Massachusetts, it's across the country, it's down in Florida, everybody, I mean, everybody has the same situation, and unfortunately, if you start to wa- if you watch the news even today, you'll see that there's tragedy happening everywhere. Um, and that's, you know, unfortunately, probably gonna be a trend because there just aren't enough lifeguards. Um, here in Dartmouth, you know, we're down to uh right now, I think we've got eleven. Um, my comfortable number is twenty, so you can see the difference of where we want to be and where we are. And there's not a thing we can do about it at the moment. Um, you know, we've, we've uh come up with a plan to staff everything we can. Um, we have signage that we've brought in to, you know, offset the fact that the guard's not gonna be there. I've notified all of our partners, uh you, you can see in that memo that, that I sent to Mr. McGinnis of the situation, making them aware of the situation and kind of the steps that they need to take and if anything, respond to assist us. Um, and, and you know, we do, our lifeguards do a lot of routine stuff, you know, yes, they, they handle the jellyfish bites and they handle like scrape knees and things like that, but they also handle, you know, that, that no one ever talks about, I mean, we have a lot of seniors that like to swim out at Round Hill, they swim laps back and forth. It's not uncommon for one of them to get tired and the lifeguard just goes out and helps them in. That is some, something as simple as that, right? That nobody hears about it, it's not a big deal, you just assist them back in, they take a couple breaths, they go back to their daily life and they go back and, and enjoy their day, well, now we have to look at, well, what happens if that lifeguard's not there, what happens to that scene, do they make it back in? Can they get back in? So I mean, that's where the kind of the whole game changes, right? So um that's why I put out that, that memo to all our partners um to advise them and, you know, you know, during the, the bulk peak time, we're pretty well-staffed. Where we're gonna run into problems is when we have callouts or uh sickness that causes the lifeguards to be even shorter. Um, you know, we don't have any lifeguards after five o'clock at Round Hill, we, we had to do that last year as well due to COVID. Um, we do have what we call uh monitors, which are just simply staff members that maybe a gate guard some other day, they pick up some hours and they're down at Round Hill and they clean the bathrooms, they monitor the bathrooms, lock everything up at night. And quite frankly, if there is uh an emergency and someone comes running up to them asking for help, they can, they have a phone there, they can call nine-one-one and get some services responding. Uh, but they're not lifeguards. Um, and we can't, we're not gonna portray them as lifeguards, it's not their job. Um, they're simply at a wanted-to-be situation, if the police are needed, they can call the police. So that's kind of where we are, um and, and it's, it's, it's a fact of life here and we have to deal with it.
Well, I think um, I think in your letter pretty much spelled out to your partners as to what, what will happen during certain events um and the location, so uh I think you know, I, I, I understand the, the, the situation and, you know, having eleven people on staff when you really need twenty uh really puts a burden on, on a lot and um, and I think, I think also what we need to do is we need to meet, make the public aware that, you know, when staff is available, when staff is not available, specifically when staff is not available. Um, so I, 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 I think we need to make that uh more than aware uh via, you know, our posting on our, on our uh website and also notifications at the beaches themselves. Um, you know, i- is, is right at the, right at the gate, you know, and even further down. You know, I mean, sometimes you have to repeat the same message several times uh so for it to sink in, so. Um, please keep us uh apprised of the situation, uh if you end up with more staff during the course of summer, please let us know. Um, and you know, if um, if Parks and Rec need an assistance from our board um in, in helping you guys uh get the word out, please let us know.
And, and, and Mr. McDonald, thank you very much, and um what, what you should be aware of is obviously the staff that we do have, we're gonna utilize them as much as they want to be utilized, so um we are looking at, you know, and it's, it's not so much just the lifeguards, the support staff as well. Um, because I did mention, I didn't mention it to you, but I did mention the email that on top of the fact that we're so short-staffed, normally our turnover rate in Parks and Rec is no more than fifty percent on, on an annual basis, which means say our entire lifeguard staff, we never lose more than fifty percent normally, so those college-age kids that graduate move on, high school kids move in, but we never usually rotate more than fifty percent of the staff out. Well, this year, we only have three returning staff in the lifeguard area, so a- and that's, you know, gate guards are similar, so that particular situation puts quite a bit of um, you know, uh weight on the support staff, which is trying to train those kids and bring them up to, to where they need to be. Um, and, and that's gonna require some overtime for sure, uh Becky in our office along with myself, who I think we were out almost eleven hours this weekend uh between both of us um to, to try to get that staff up to where it needs to be, because it's not something we normally, we don't normally have to do that much. Um, because we rely on that returning staff to help get the new kids into the groove and get them, you know, familiar with our, our programming. Um, we also have, we, and we also have our multi-agency um drill that we do with the fire department, stat ambulance coming up on the the um, the last Wednesday of the month, which we do anyway. Uh, it's a great training tool for the kids, it kind of really brings some, I think some real-life scenario into um kind of what they could expect during a tragic incident, I think, you know, when they get, when they become certified, that's great. If that a YMCA in a swimming pool where it's a completely controlled environment. Um, there's a big difference when it's out in the ocean and you have people screaming at you in a panic and you have people missing. And we try to bring some of that in to not scare the kids, but just to kind of show them what reality really is, because we've seen reality and we kind of know um through the fire department personnel, the ambulance personnel, and it's good because they get to meet each other, it's kind of like a meeting greet. Um, so in the event that something happens, there's, you got some familiar faces um when they arrive, so um we have a lot of things going on, Becky and I, you know, like I said, we're, we're doing what we can and we're trying to get everybody up to speed as fast as possible.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Tim, uh thanks for the great work you do. Uh, could you clarify for me, uh is there, is there a pool of uh lifeguards around the area that have not committed to a job at this point, or you think they're all committed or some, you have a handle on that at all?
I think they're pretty much all committed. Um, we, you know, we actually, we had, you know, we hired more than eleven, we've lost. When that, what happens routinely is the state is the last to hire usually. So um, you know, they'll start, br- kids will start, you know, sending out applications to everyone, they'll start accepting jobs and then they'll go after that highest pay, so we've lost a couple to the state already.
So you, you, you have a budget for twenty lifeguards and right now you have eleven and you'll give some of, you have to give them as much overtime as they can take. Uh, but that pool is still gonna be unspent. I- is there any way we can spend that uh in some way to attract a handful of uh candidates that might be out there? And not give up on that part yet?
Yeah, we still have it posted, we post on social media and the website occasionally, asking for for interested guys to submit applications, but you get into a point here, especially with our, in, in, in our town or in any town um where you've got a ten-week season and you're into the season and the time it takes to hire and goes to the personnel process, the drug screening and all that, it indicates itself because by the time you get the person on staff, we'll do the, we'll do the season.
On the other hand, we may be faced with many hours of uh no lifeguards on duty. Um, and is it all hands on deck to try to capture some of those people that might be out there, or you think we just, there's nothing we can do?
I tend to think there's not much we can do at this point, um but like I said, we, we're still, we still have it posted, we'll still take every application and, and look.
Is there, uh, and rate change at this point is not possible?
No, without a, a rate change, I would have to go through the time meeting process. So you, you wouldn't be able to do anything with that, and quite, you know, what some of these communities are doing is they're and I've seen it out there, is they're trying to offset that three-hundred-dollar cost by an incentive, by, you know, paying for that certification, and that's, that's something really I think we need to look into, um.
I, 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 my attitude is that I mean, people talk about Round Hill now constantly and how much they're using it, how much it's being used and how much they look forward to it. And if we run the risk of not having as much possible help we can get there if it means getting around the wage right by giving stipends or bonuses or signing bonuses or something, I is that out of the question, because I, there's gotta be a handful of people out, you don't need that many, if you could find another four or five at least, is that, is that out of the question? And then you have to take care of the ones you hired already as well, because they should get the same thing that you give to new people. It's gonna cost them money, but the idea is that you're still not gonna spend the twenty people that you would have uh allocated for, so why not use that pool of money that's there and try to really staff it with a handful that might be out there, but that's kind of what I'm thinking.
That's it, they're out there.
Yeah, right, you know, that's it, they're out there, yeah. And there's logistics to it, too, there's all logistics as far as doing all that process you mentioned, moving something, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Barnes would have to be involved in, because
You know, I like the idea of, of paying for the certification. But we got paying for the certification, I, I would want to guarantee that they have to work for the town. And not, we pay for the certification, then they start and then all of a sudden they go off to the state.
Right.
You know, that, that ain't gonna cut it, I mean, you, we pay for your certification, you're, you're with us for the whole year. Period, or you pay us back for the certification.
Absolutely.
Down in the dark, but I think we should take it.
I'm sorry, Sam?
I said it's a shot in the dark, the, the season is very short, but I think, take that opportunity to offer to pay the uh, pay the fee uh even if we get two or three people.
Well, I mean, I know Tim's combing the woods for, for, for staffing, so um as he said, you go through the process, you hire somebody, go through the personnel process, the drug screening and everything, next thing you know, you know, one-third of your season's gone. You know, I mean, we're already, you know, we're already into the first week of the season.
Right, you gotta remember, this starts, starts in, you know, April.
Right.
So.
Right, so.
Well, good work, Tim.
Just keep us, keep us um, keep us apprised of the situation, Tim, um, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I just want to uh tell Tim, I, I, I think we all acknowledge that it's a difficult situation. I also think that you, you Tim have done a, a great job setting up a plan as best you can and uh you have our support for sure, uh trying to get through this, you're certainly the right man for the job, Stan.
I, I appreciate that, you know, I think we've done as a town as far as trying to cover the beach and trying to cover, make, keep people safe, I think we've done as much as we can do with what we have at the moment, and I think that's um and that's not just here, that's, like I said, that's being felt everywhere right now, so hopefully it improves.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the board and committee members stipend uh co- um committee discussion. Uh, town meeting had suggested that uh, uh committee be formed of five uh townspeople um to look at this, that no member of an elected position be appointed to this committee. Uh, I would even go further as to say no member of an appointed um committee member, so and I'd like to try to get five people who basically have no affiliation with any boards at all on this committee, uh what do you guys feel?
I think that's a good suggestion.
That's the way to go, um.
All right, so.
We're gonna advertise this.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, we have to, we have to post it and hopefully we'll get some people um um willing to, willing to delve into this. Uh, Mr. Tattelbaum, you uh?
Well, I, I, I guess now that, we don't, now, now not the time, but this we need to provide a lot of direction is what we're looking for and what, how to do it, but I guess we can get the people first and go from there?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, basically the, the direction is, is to look at the stipends of all the elected officials. I mean, that's basically it, and if they want to delve it into further into appointed officials, they can, but not too many appointed officials um in, on town boards get paid. So um, and there's, there's a wide uh range of people that uh, you know, uh.
Well, can we say?
These positions get.
When we go out looking for people, can we give them a timetable so they know what the commitment is, rather than just say, do you want to join a committee so they can?
Well, I mean, basically, the, I mean, let's put it this way, I would assume that they would have to report back to town meeting uh back in June. So they have a less than a year to uh, to, to research this and make recommendations.
Not the fall town meeting?
No, the fall town meeting, no, no, that's uh, this is a budget item and that should be strictly looked for budget.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So.
So you're, you're talking about a fairly substantial length, of length uh commitment?
Yeah, I mean, let's, about a year, if not a lot.
John?
Mr. Mickelson?
Well, Mr. Barnes and, and myself have put together a, uh, a uh a list of who would get what and uh basically we went back to the last time that the that elected officials uh received um some type of stipend. Um, and then I think the, the other thing needs to be understood by this board or this committee that they have to understand that um, that there is nothing, the, the stipend is the only dollar value that you're offering that those particular uh people, uh there, there are no town uh, um, um guarantees for insurance and retirement and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It is only a stipend for that, for that uh position only. And no other monies are uh, are involved with it, and I believe that's what we should be doing, obviously.
Well, that's, that would be up to that committee to decide which direction they want to go.
Yes.
Um.
That's what most.
At that point in time, whatever they propose or whatever the proposal that comes from that committee will then have to.
So rather than put a, rather than put a timeframe on it, we could say that the, the work of this committee will be to prepare uh a recommendation for June town meeting of two thousand and twenty-two.
Yep.
So whatever time required, it's gonna, that's what, that's what the goal is, to be prepared for June.
Yep, and if it's, if there's, if there's monies attached, then it should be done a little earlier because it's gonna be vetted by the finance committee.
No, no, I'm saying whatever that means, to be, so that it's on, it's an article on the June town meeting, which means, you're right, it has to be re- pretty ready for, ready to go in January.
Yeah.
So it goes through the process.
February, yeah, definitely. All right, so do I have a motion to uh create this committee uh from five uh five uh citi- voters, registered voters uh from the town?
So moved.
Second, second, second by Mr., motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On the motion, any questions? Roll call, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, okay. All right, and get that posted, Sean, as soon as possible, please?
We will.
All right, next item is the common vic late fee discussion, as the board knows, uh specifically this year, we had a lot of um common vic licenses that have been uh for all intents and purposes, late over a period of time. The town does not have a late fee schedule for these licenses. Uh, there are some towns that do, Westport, um who is our next-door neighbor, does have a um a late fee, their common vic fees are seventy-five dollars with a late fee of fifty. Um. Lanesboro has the same common vic fee as us, they have a late fee of fifty. Uh, Barnstable, um which basically sometimes Dartmouth gets uh kind of shoed in with because of the size, certainly not because of the budget. Um, all their licenses have a late fee of uh one hundred dollars, so um I think at this point in time, we generally don't have a problem with uh most of the licenses this year, we had problems with the common vic. Um, I'm not sure what the board's appetite is for a late fee. Um, my suggestion that if we do a late fee, it should be no less than half the uh, the fee, so it'll be fifty. Mr. Tattelbaum?
Well, we able, I, I, this past year, as I recall, was an absolute uh, uh, it, um a new, a rare occurrence. My question is, before that, uh was it a major issue in any other time, or is it just, was it concentrated in this past year?
It was more concentrated this year than anything, there have been instances of maybe one or two or three in maybe one or two or three individuals, um, you know, but the licenses didn't extend as further out as they did this year. Generally, it's maybe two weeks, three weeks type of thing. But now with the online permitting, there should be absolutely no excuse whatsoever.
So is it safe to say that the majority of these, the issue for this past year was due to a COVID year?
I would think, um, yeah, I mean, let's put it this way. Any of the businesses that, um, were late with their licenses were in operation. They were not shut down. So that's the, that's the one thing that, um, if they were shut down and then they were late for their licenses, I could, I could understand that. But all those businesses were open. And they just.
Well, I, my only point is, my only point is that, uh, it was, it, it seemed quite clear that it was due to a COVID year and a lot of these restaurants didn't know which end was up from one day to the next in terms of maybe open, closed, uh, outside, inside, uh, whatever. And I think there was a hesitation. I'm not justifying it, but that's what happened. They didn't know they have a business in the, it was the next week.
Well, they were all open, David.
But they were open, not, but they weren't doing the, the challenge to open and be.
Yeah, but every single one of them was open.
And, yeah, open, but.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't that they closed down for a while. They were all open.
Well, open and operating at a loss is probably, you know, I, I can't speak for them, but yeah.
Right. All right, Mr. Mickelson?
So here, here's what I think we should be, considering the circumstances of this past year. Let's, uh, let's, let's, uh, move on. Let's not look at the, look at it this, this year. Uh, let's, let's see what happens next year. Um, I'm, I'm willing to cut all those people a break because most of the people that were late were never late before. Um, so let's cut to the chase, give them a break, look at it next year.
Mr. Gracie?
Well, what I'm more concerned about paying, and I think there should be some sort of, uh, payment to be DTBD. But what bothered me more was that some people just seem to ignore the rules. And just kept right on operating like, like there was no requirement or anything else, and they didn't fear any punishment or anything. Uh, I think we need to step up the requirement that if people are not licensed, they don't open. I mean, rules are rules. I'm a rule guy, you know? Um, just, just dragging it on and on and on, should be much longer than it should be. If somebody something forgot and it comes in a week late, that's one thing. I'm perfectly willing to excuse that. But when something goes on for months and nobody is tending to the, the business that supports what the system allows or requires, that bothers me.
Right. I mean, this is, I mean, most of these establishments have multiple licenses. You know, not only do they have a common Vic from the select board, they also have a border health license. Um, you know, depending upon the, the business, um, and the type of business, restaurants do have border health licenses, uh, convenience stores have, uh, border health licenses for the storage of milk and, and other products. So, I mean, it's not like, um, you know, it's not, it's not like, you know, this is something, oops, I forgot. It's just sometimes, you know, they just didn't. Um, and, you know, I mean, I'm willing to go along with Mr. Mickelson to cut people slack because of this year. But if it's the same, you know, if it's the same people next year, um, you know, I'm, I would be very hesitant to, uh, renew their licenses if they're just sticking around and, uh, you know, I don't want to shut a business down because, but you know, this is part of doing business. You know, uh, in making sure that your licenses to, to, to operate are, are up and running. Um, you know, so, Mr. Herron?
I'd like to also postpone this for a year. Like to see how well our online permitting works for us. And, uh, I think it'll work better for us next year a- after COVID.
I believe so too. And I think the online permitting is something. And to be honest with you, if you are late with online permitting, you're gonna, you're gonna see the date that they file. You know, I mean, this, this stuff goes out, what, October thirty-first? To, to, to tell everybody, they got sixty days in which to renew. I mean, you know.
It's on their license.
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I just want to add to what I said before. The, the part, the part that really bothers me is a lot of these places serve alcohol. And serving alcohol without a license is illegal. And we really need to be tougher on this in some way to encourage people to do it correctly or not do it at all.
Correct. Mr. Talabon?
Well, I, I, I think we should postpone a year, but, but it looks, I got hard to look at it again, especially with the online, uh, uh, program. But Frank's brought up a different point, is if someone has no intention of signing up or actually breaking the law or the rules. I think maybe we should consider having a, you know, a one month, you know, deadline. If you don't do it, then you lose your license. That's, to me, is different than being late. And we haven't had that many people. I, I, I don't think people should operate, you know, continually without a license. And if that's a bigger issue, is, I don't know how big of issue that is, Frank. Maybe you knew better because you were involved in that, but uh, that to me is a much different, a more serious, uh, situation.
Well, I would suggest that we don't, um, postpone this for a year, but that if we do postpone it, we postpone it for, uh, six months. We take a look at it in January. Um, you know, that's something that we would need to do because by then we would have all the information.
That's next. So, yeah.
So let's take a look at this in January, um, to see what's, you know, what's what. And, um, I would suggest that, um, when the license renewals go out, that the board just be, uh, CC'd on the, on who is being, um, sent out notifications for license renewals so that we have it ahead of time. At least to take a look at it and then, um, updated, you know, maybe every two weeks or so as to who's responded. So we can kind of just see as it progresses.
What percentage, what percentage of licenses are done in January, February? Are that most of them or?
Uh, for the common Vic, all of them.
All of them, okay.
Yeah, generally, we, generally, we start, um, approving the licenses in December.
Okay. So January is a great.
Including the legal licenses.
January is a great time to look at, to see where we stand. It's a great idea, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. So we'll hold off on that until January, when then we'll have, uh, progression, progressional, uh, information, uh, as time goes after October thirty-first. All right, uh, next item on the agenda, we have the Director of Development Employment Agreement. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, as you know, Cody Hadad has been filling in for the past year as the interim Director of Development. Uh, you've all been, uh, acutely, uh, acquainted with his work. Uh, he's been with, before the board many times. He's been working on a number of high level projects for the town. Uh, he's solicited and applied for a number of grants that have been successful in town. Uh, he's done, uh, an incredible job, uh, in a short time here. So this, uh, contract would solidify his, uh, employment for another three years.
I agree with that. Um, Cody's done a great job. And I know, um, there have been people on other committees that he's worked with that, uh, they have, um, very, very good things to say about Cody. So, um, Board's pleasure. Mr. Herron?
Uh, I'm gonna vote against this contract. Uh, the percentage, eight, five, and five. It's too much for me in this COVID year. It goes above and beyond what our other managers got. And we, you know, we talk about charts, but we talk about charts all the time, what they pay in other towns. There's no reference to how many years' experience that is with that person in that town. So once again, I cannot vote for this.
Well, I'll agree with you on a couple of points, but I will, I will disagree with you on this point. Is whether or not bringing somebody in who has the experience. Sometimes experience does matter. Sometimes experience doesn't matter. Um, and bringing in somebody who has been an interim person for a year, he's got the experience for the position. Um, and this contract reflects, um, the the experience Mr. Hadad has, but it is significantly, significantly less than if the previous, um, person in this position was still employed by the town. So, um, I'm going to disagree with you on that point.
Well, one, one other thing then. We also load up the, the first year of the contract. Why wouldn't it be five, five, and eight? You want to make sure the employee stays here. You don't want to load it up the first year.
No, I, I think the, the amount of work that Mr. Hadad has done in the year from where we offered him the interim contract to where he is now and his, and the ability that he has shown, uh, is a point of of us telling him that we know he is doing a good job and that we want to make sure that he continues to do that job. Um, and, um, yeah, and I think that's, that's where I'm going to stay. Um, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if it's appropriate that we be discussing approving a contract that he hasn't agreed to yet.
He hasn't, he hasn't agreed to it.
We, this contract was approved in the last, in the, um, not this executive session, but the previous executive session.
Right, but we, we, we just found out that he hasn't, he hasn't agreed with what we're offering.
Well, the question is this, has Mr., has Mr. Hadad agreed to this contract as presented tonight?
He has, yes.
Okay, there you go.
I didn't think that was the case. Okay.
Mr. Mickelson?
So I just wanted to get this straight. So, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, is that right? It's eight, five, and five, correct?
Yes.
I make a motion that we, uh, appoint, uh, Mr. Had as, uh, uh, for a new contract for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, starting at eight percent, twenty-two, five percent, twenty-three, five percent, twenty-four.
The, the term is July first, twenty twenty-one, and continuing through July first, twenty twenty-three.
The fiscal years are twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four.
Yeah, but that's.
All right, this will make sure, all right, make sure it's fiscal years.
Exactly.
And not calendar years, please.
Fiscal years.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
A question?
Yes, um, wait a minute, let me get a second on the motion, please.
I'll say a second. But I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Gracie?
Uh, are we still gonna call him interim or is this gonna be a, a real?
The contract is director.
All right. Not an interim. He is, he will be the DOD.
Okay.
Mr. Talabon?
This, um, I'd like to respond to, uh, to Mr. Herron's comments. Uh, in most of the contracts that we've okayed over the years of his term, he's always looked to look for someone with less experience at a lower rate.
All right, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go from there. I'm not gonna go there.
I'd like to finish. I'd like to finish.
I'm not gonna go there, Mr. Talabon. Uh, we're not gonna.
You don't even know what I'm gonna say.
Well, you've already started by saying he's looking for, that's not what he's looking at. I, it's, I know Mr. Herron. I agree with Mr. Herron. Sometimes I agree with.
I, I, I don't see why I can't speak.
Go ahead. All right.
Let him speak.
Make it very brief. This is a young fella, this is a young fella at a much lower rate than our, than our, than our previous director. He's learned, he's earned his year here. The rate is reasonable. He's gonna run with it. And it's exactly what you've tried to hold for in the past. This guy deserves what he got. He's earned his way, and it's a very reasonable contract. For the town, it's a fantastic contract. And he's proven because he's here and he'll only get better.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All right, Mr. Gracie, second the motion. On the motion, any further questions? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
No.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, four to one.
Do you want to, uh, vote to have it stamped or do you want it signed? By the board?
Board's pleasure?
I'm okay with it stamped.
Is that a motion, Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, Mr. Herron? On the motion, any questions?
Uh, with, one thing with the motion before, uh, do you want all the stamps on it? In the past, you've Jack, in the past, you've had all the stamps regardless of the vote, other times.
Well, I would say you stamp the contract of those people who approved the contract. I don't think Mr. Herron would want his name stamped on a contract he, uh, disapproved. Correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right, on the motion to stamp the contract of the four people who approved the contract, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
And chair votes in favor. Okay. All right. Board of Committee Appointments, we have one, two, three. We have Joseph Burke on the Conservation Commission, James Thompson on the DCTV Board, and the Police Station Use Review Committee, Susan Crosby. Board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Motion, yeah, hold on. Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. On, uh, motion question, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah. I didn't see attendance with any of this.
I'm sorry, what was that? I'm sorry. Did I have it reversed?
Yeah.
All right, so a motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. Okay. Sorry, I was looking at my notes. All right, you looking for, uh, attendance?
Well, we usually get, that was even the last meeting, we got attendance reports for those that we were loading on. We didn't get it this time.
I believe we had it from the last time. So I, I do recall, um, these individuals having, uh, successful, um, attendances.
They have. Okay, I would suggest that, that even though we've had something before, I'm, I'm okay with it, but if we have, if we had something before that be carried over to another meeting, we need to, we need to have the paperwork with us.
I got a better idea. In the future, committee appointments, can we just have a little blurb right next to their name? Uh, three out of four meetings, two out of five meetings, so that we look at, write at their names and what we know where their record is right away.
Uh, we could do that. It, you know, it's.
Instead of having the chart where we have to go back, let's just put it right on, let's just put it, um, additional information right on, right next to their names.
Right. It, it, we can do that. I will just say that it could be labor intensive to.
I know.
We have a very hard time getting the attendance from the committees and then translating that into the, the people. We'll, we'll go over it. We'll, we'll definitely give it a try, um. And then we'll, you know, we can reassess it, I think, next year.
Best you can.
We'll do that.
Okay. Be that little engine that could. Okay, on the motion, uh, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay. All right, old business, uh, COVID.
Uh, yes, I mean, just one, uh, major update. The governor signed legislation that continues some of the COVID-related um, items into, uh, next year, uh, one being remote town meeting that are on right now. That is going to continue into December. Uh, outdoor seating continues to April and, uh, uh, cocktails to go, uh, continues to till, uh, May as well. So, or cocktails to go is April, outdoor dining is May. Sorry.
Till next year, right?
Yes, of twenty twenty-two.
Good luck, uh, good luck with outdoor dining in December, January, that's for sure.
Remote meetings have been approved until April also.
Yep, I'm, I'll be honest with you. I'm looking to do remote throughout the summer and then start in person in September if. But, um, I'll let the board chew on that for a while. Uh, I don't need your opinions right now on that. Just chew on it and we'll discuss it sometime in August.
I agree. I just, I just want the details to be correct. If we're talking about what's, what's, what's legal according to the governor and what's not, we, that, that was left out.
Yep. Well, we now know that, uh, uh, we, we know the, basically what the House has approved and the government assigned, so. All right, Bush Corner, any updates?
Uh, no new updates. We're still waiting to hear back from DEP on, uh, the dates to meet. Uh, but that, you know, the time is kind of coming on. So we'll, we'll see what they reply back with and we'll try to coordinate some times on that work.
Okay, well, spaghetti wall for us. Uh, like milk and joke?
Uh, no new updates.
Okay. All right, uh, let's see. Minutes of, yes, Mr. Gracie?
We haven't done the warrant yet, just to remind you.
Oh, yes.
Yep, we'll get that in a minute. It's, um, I wrote that down.
Okay.
All right, so I need a motion to, um, have Mr. McGinnis stamp the warrant for this week. Whatever warrants are available. Do I have that motion?
I will make the motion that we approve the warrant and have it stamped by Mr. McGinnis.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, any questions? Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is we have the minutes of May twenty-fourth, uh, twenty twenty-one.
I will motion, make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Harren. On the motion, any questions?
No.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, anybody have anything to bring up? Anybody?
Yeah.
Anyone?
Me. Hello?
I don't see, I see a blank screen there. Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Mickelson, go ahead.
That good?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Gentlemen, remember, um, a few weeks ago, I discussed about seriously considering, as Sean said, getting back into the building. Um, and I, I think, uh, I know we should, I know personally, I think it's time to do it. I like to see people, I want to see their faces. I want to see the reactions of people. Want to see people in, in the building and, and be part of that system. And you lose it through Zoom, in my opinion. It's convenient, I love it, uh, in certain regards, but there's nothing of face-to-face meeting. We all should think, I know, through the summer, I think it's a great idea, Sean, but we need to really consider getting back in the fall.
Um, I, like I said, I think through the summertime will be a, a good time to um, to do what we need to do. And then started in the September. Um, I don't have a problem doing that.
I just have one other thing, if you don't mind, a conversation.
Okay, go ahead.
Maria Connor? This morning and um she was very happy to announce that uh the friends have uh contributed uh I guess the C O A needs a new van and um they go through the process, but there's a twenty percent that the town has to kick in. And the friends are gonna pay between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars for the town's fifteen percent. They also uh contributed five thousand dollars to the Veterans Transitional Home and another five thousand dollars to the Y M C A in Dartmouth. Uh, another example of what the friends do for our town. Thank you very much.
That's for sure. Um, this town really relies on a lot of organizations to help out and believe me, it is greatly appreciated among us all. Mr. Talabon?
Yeah, I've, I've requested, certainly not looking for any discussion, but uh I've had two incidences in the last two weeks. People bring up to me the issue of the uh zombie housing. I think we should reopen that and have a, put it on an agenda because uh, uh, we need to have some kind of resolution, do it as soon as we can.
Well, you know, we have, we have people who complain about it, we do something about it, and then people complain about that we're doing something about it. Well, and it, it's, it's, sometimes it's frustrating. Um, because what we, what we think is we have something thoughtful and, and the ability to, to do what we need to do or to address a certain problem, um, then all of a sudden, um you know, people.
Like my, my contention is, is that when a town article, the end result town article many times is nowhere near what we meant to be, but it's translated from our own legal department in the state to come out what it is. And I, my issue is, I think that what we ended up with was confusing and it didn't do the job. And can we go back and talk about what can we do to make it clearer, simpler and legal? So we can have something that works because right now, uh, our town is helpless with the, the situation. Can we do more? There's just no reason to let it keep going without more effort.
Well, the problem is this, and this is from experience. Clear and simple and legal do not exist together.
Mm-hmm.
All right, then that's the problem. You have, in order for the town to do what it needs to do to address the situation, there has to be certain legal ramifications. And that legal ramifications sometimes are not clear and simple.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because it has to fit a specific language or else it just gets tossed. Um, and the last thing I want to see is a bylaw or a code or anything that, you know, the town has worked on, gets passed, and then all of a sudden the Attorney General's Office or some court says, no, it's not good enough or that there's problems.
In my mind, there has to be an article out there that's proven that works and we could find and have some, there's something we can do instead of doing what we're doing, which is we're helpless and it's uh just, it's not, I, I don't think we should give up until we try again.
I mean, and there are many things that, you know, that, that, you know, needs to be addressed. You know, a lot of it, a lot of it is, you know, uh, besides the zombie houses, you have, you know, um, neighbors that uh, you know, keep keep people up at night, you know, that the landlord just continues to um, collect the rent but has no ramifications for it and just doesn't care. Um, or you have somebody who has the ability to repair cars out of their garage and bo, and, and bothers the neighborhood with multiple uh cars all over the place and
Yep.
You know, whether or not, you know, oh, we're just doing family cars or we're just, you know, we're not doing that uh type of thing. Or somebody who has um, doesn't cut their grass and it grows, you know, eighty feet high and or they have multiple vehicles on their, you know, so I mean, it's a lot of, lot of little things that, you know, just drives people crazy, you know, or somebody who has a, a stores, you know, cars on a lot and the next thing you know, there are jet skis and, and, and buckets and, and construction vehicles and everything all over the place and it looks like, you know, it looks like a junk hole, you know? Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what you just said, Sean, but all those things can be separate. They, they don't have to be, no, when we talk zombie house, we know exactly in our mind what we're talking about.
Right.
And I agree with David. We have to do something because we're doing nothing right now. It's dangerous to the community and it's certainly dangerous to the neighbor, neighbors in that area. So we have to, we have to try and get our legal team to try and come up with something a little bit better that's narrow and focused and a- addresses specifically what we're all envisioning right now as what we consider as zombie house.
We, we're also using time and effort of our town employees and they can't do anything, but they're getting calls, they're getting requests and they're basically helpless and it's wasting their time and it's insulting the residents because they don't get results either.
Yeah, a few years ago, we had a problem with the noise violation uh ordinance that I worked, that I pushed through. And we got it passed, but it had many of the same problems because of the, because it's hard to define, okay? Uh, but there was a group of people that worked on it and including our legal team and it came up with something that town meeting allowed to fly right through, so it can, it can be done. Um.
Well, let's just.
It's not easy.
Bring it back up. Let's bring it back up, Sean. Anthony, Brian, and uh now that, now that we also now have the new inspector.
Right.
You know, Director of Services, uh, maybe his input will also help also.
Yeah, maybe he could provide what would be a good tool for him to be able to do something about the problem. That's.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a dead end, but I'd like to find out what uh, so, what our options might be, that's all.
Yeah. All right, it's something to, to work on, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion made by Mickelson, seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. Gracie, on the motion, any questions? There better not be. Mr. Talabon?
Uh, no, yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Always a wise guy. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. All right, good night, gentlemen. Thank you very much for your time.